My question to you is, do you have an appointment?
I mean, so, who are you?
I'm with security.
What's your name?
What's your name?
Do you have business with the school board?
I'm not gonna answer that question at this point. Why?
Because this is, this is not really open to the public unless you have business here.
Well, who owns the building?
Orange County Public Schools.
Who pays Orange County Public Schools? See what I mean?
My boss is coming.
Are you, are you filming me now?
Yeah.
You can turn it off if you don't have permission to film me.
Well, I have the First Amendment, freedom of press.
Are you Liberty somebody or other, or what's, what's your group?
Liberty something, what's that?
What's your, what's your name?
What's the name of your?
You're asking us all kinds of questions, why can't we get some information?
Well, I mean, I wasn't here to speak to anybody in particular.
Is this private property? I mean, it's, it's public property, but it's, but it's-
This is quite, this is quasi-private property.
Can you explain what that means?
What is the purpose of the, the videotaping, Scott?
I, he's documenting what's transpiring here.
He's documenting?
We're documenting what, what, what we're doing here. What's the, what's the difference?
The difference is that-
Cause we're peasants?
No, the difference is that we are public employees.
We're done here, do you have any questions for me?
Welcome back, Liberty Patrolers, we are out here at the School District of Orange County. I'm out here with, this is a public service, we are going to do our thing by taking pictures in public, which is protected under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, freedom of press rights, to be more exact. And, uh, we're here to see that our public servants treat we the people with respect, and above all, honor our rights. So without further ado, let's maintain the element of surprise. As usual, government has no, uh, hesitation to record we the people. Wonder how they'll react when we pull the reverse card on them, the people we pay with their tax dollars.
What the hell is going on here? Please have ID ready.
Yeah, this is gonna be interesting. There's an example of restricted area that we know not to go into.
How you doing, sir?
Good, how you doing?
Alright. I'm sorry, but I'm not familiar with who you guys are with, but-
Uh, we're, we're independent. We're with ourselves, independent.
Okay.
We're not with a corporation, if that's what you're asking.
Are you meeting someone here?
I don't know, maybe.
Man, you guys can't just come in and film.
Why is that?
You just can't do that, sir, unless you have permission. Did anybody give you permission to do that?
Is it against the law?
I'll call media relations.
Yeah.
You're gonna call media relations? Ma'am? Okay.
Yeah, just wanna make sure it's okay.
Yeah, it's, it's okay.
It's not been against you, but-
Yeah, I know it's not personal, um, but who told you that, though? Like, who would I, who would I ask questions about that? Cause I know you're just doing your job.
It's open. It's open. The door's open.
They can't hear you, it's, it's all garbled out there when you speak?
Yeah, when you, I think you were trying to say something to me out there, I couldn't hear you, but the, uh, the door was open, yeah.
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 Thanks, guys.
You got it.
Janice?
Hey, Janice, hey.
Oh my gosh, this is my friend's speech. Are you here?
Can you call, uh, a guy or-
Another sign that says, have your ID ready.
They're not supposed to be here.
Do you guys have an appointment?
Where's my counterpart at?
I don't know.
What are you guys looking for?
Uh, where's my colleague? He's not, not here?
Okay, I don't know where your colleague is, so what, what are you guys doing here?
Oh, we're just, we're here gathering content for a story.
And they, when you deny them access to certain areas, and they, where you stop, but this is a private building, it's on this-
No, this is, this is public.
This is public?
Yeah.
So what do you, uh, where's your buddy?
I have no idea.
Hey, did you, so do you guys have an appointment with anybody?
Maybe.
No, 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 do you have an appointment with somebody? My question to you is, do you have an appointment?
I mean, so, who are you?
I'm with security.
What's your name?
What's your name?
Well, you're the public servant, sir, I'm just asking you-
What's your, no, 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 I asked you first, what is your name?
No, I asked you what your name was first.
Well, I asked you first, I have the right to ask you, what is your name and why are you here? What's the nature of your business?
I don't, I don't have a right to tell you, or ask you?
Yeah, then you answer my question, I don't answer yours.
Okay, well, I asked you first, who you are.
No, 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 I asked you first.
I just wanted to know who you are.
What are you doing here?
I just wanted to know who you are. I know you're with the security, but who are you? I don't want anything, I just want answer to my question, who are you? You approached me, sir, I didn't ask you-
Okay, I'm with security, cause you guys are coming in here filming.
Yeah, I own this building.
What's your name?
Well, I asked you first.
No, 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 I just asked you, what is your name? I just went through the same thing with this guy.
But I asked you first.
Okay, look, look, gentlemen, this-
Just follow your law.
No, 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 no.
You have a policy, sir, that you have to be professional.
Just tell me, I'd like to know who I'm speaking with, sir.
You gotta, you gotta give respect, you gotta give respect to earn respect. And they got-
Sir, what was your name?
Really tight security over here.
What was your name, sir? I'm sorry.
Officer, are you a sergeant?
Okay.
I noticed your stripes, are you sergeant, sir?
Yes, I am.
What's your name, badge number, sergeant?
I'm Dave Crowe, do you have business with the school board?
I'm not gonna answer that question at this point.
And I need you to leave.
Why?
Because this is, this is not really open to the public unless you have business here.
Well, who owns the building?
Orange County Public Schools.
Uh, who pays Orange County Public Schools? See what I mean?
My boss is coming.
Okay, who's, who's your boss? Is he a corporal, or?
He's a commander.
Okay.
How did you guys get in? Were you buzzed in?
Yeah, yeah, we didn't like break in with a crowbar or anything.
No.
I don't wanna put you in your name.
Crowe, like a bird.
Sergeant Crowe? Would you happen to know where I could make a public records request?
I think it's online. We don't have a records department here, it's at Magic Way.
Magic Way?
It's, uh, Oak Ridge and John Young.
You got another administrative office?
Um, that's where our records department is.
Yes, that's where it's at.
Yeah.
So I can't, I can't make a request here and you could just call over?
I have the facility here.
So you guys don't, you don't call over the law?
Imagine you can make a request, but I don't know where you would do it.
Well, if, if we can make a public records request here, then that would mean it's public, cause only government, public buildings can-
That department's not here, so I don't know if you can without doing it online.
To put a request in, we can. They can actually like process the requests or get us the items that we're requesting, but they can email our, you know, verbal uh, requests, the items thereof, that they can send it to whoever, the appropriate person, city clerk or whatever, to get the items for us. But yeah, we can, we can put the request in. That's an easy way to know if it's public, private, if you can put a public records request in, then, you know, we're good. I'm not giving you a hard time, by the way, uh, nice to meet you.
I guess you could, um-
You know.
Cause we do have public stuff.
Well, we'll be around. Oh, hey, you're here for us?
I'm Scott Allen, I'm the chief communications officer for the school district.
Nice to meet you. I, uh, hey.
What are we, what are we doing?
He's here, uh-
Are you part of the media? Are you a member of the media?
Yeah, we're, we're independent journalists, we're just here gathering content on the, on a story for the school district here in Orange County.
So in order to have permission to be on our property, you need to coordinate through media relations, through my department? You can't just come in and start filming.
Well, if we weren't filming, we would have, we'd be able to just come on in without permission? Is that, is it just for those who are filming?
Business, if there was business here.
Yeah, we got business, yeah, yeah.
Well, with who? Do you have an appointment?
Um, I don't have an appointment, but-
Well, you have to have an appointment with somebody.
We do have business.
Okay.
Legitimate business.
Are you filming me now?
Yeah.
You can turn it off if you don't have permission to film me.
Well, I have the First Amendment, freedom of press.
No, I understand that, but you're filming me and that you don't have my permission to do so.
All due respect, sir, you did approach me, I didn't, I didn't-
No, I know, but you're on, technically, you're on property, you have to have permission to be on here in order to film. There's not a public meeting happening right now.
Do you have like a, is that a policy, or?
Yeah, it's a, it's a management directive.
Do you have like the-
Yeah, we, I can send it to you.
Can you, do you have a printout or something you can show me while I'm here?
Um, not on me, I don't, but I can send it to you. So our PIO, if you're, if you're media, we have a PIO inbox? And you can email, email it, it's PIO@OCPS.net, and we'll be happy to respond.
Okay.
Okay?
I, I hear you, but we're, I mean, we are technically conducting business here, we're not here for, for nefarious purposes, or-
But what are you doing?
Oh, right now, we're taking pictures, and we're just gathering content for our story.
What, what's the story?
Um, I can't divulge all the details, it's on, it's in general, it's, it's, in general for the school district of Orange County.
What's the name of your group? Are you Liberty somebody or other, or what's, what's your group?
Liberty something, what's that?
What's your, what's your name?
What's the name of your?
You're asking us all kinds of questions, why can't we get some information?
Well, I mean, I wasn't here to speak to anybody in particular, I mean, but-
Then what's your business here?
Well, I'm independent, I don't wanna divulge too many, too much information.
But what I'm saying is, the building is not open to just anyone, like, it's a closed building, it's a closed facility. It's open during, if we have, if we have a public meeting, which we don't today, we don't have a notice public meeting, there's our notice board. So, but if you have an appointment, or you have a reason to be here, we just don't allow anyone just to come in through the doors, the doors are locked, you're gained entrance by us letting you in.
Right, they didn't notice anything about being in an appointment or anything like that.
That's what I'm asking you, are you here on business to have an appointment or something?
Yeah, I, I am here on business. Legitimate business, yeah.
What he's saying is, are you here to see somebody in the building? You're just here to get your content?
Here to gather content, like I, like I was about to say-
Which is not our business, that's your business.
Right, so-
So he's saying it's kinda closed to the public, until we have a meeting.
So what I was saying was, I can't divulge all the details until my story is disseminated to the public.
But what I'm saying is, this is a closed facility, oh yeah.
How you doing, sir?
Commander Gonzalez.
Yes.
So, they're here, there's no public meeting happening today, and they're just walking around recording, so even for security purposes, we would not allow that on any of our property.
Who do you have here that-
Unless there's a, unless there's a public meeting happening, this is not a public building open to the public, then anyone can just come in and go out.
And why, why is that? Why, why is that a thing?
It's, it's, it's been a thing, that's why we have, that's why we have, uh, we let you in the entrances, that's why we, we just don't allow anyone just to walk in, you have to have an appointment or have business.
Can you, can you print up the policy, so I can look at it?
Sure.
If you don't mind, I'll wait here, or wait right around here, if you wanna print that out, I'll take a look at it.
No, I'll send it to you, I told you, if you're a member of the media, then we have, then we have restrictions on the media per management directive, and I'll send it to you.
Respectfully, I mean, I just met you, so you're telling me that I can't do something I know I have a right to do? I mean, it's protect, it's first, it's constitutionally protected activity under the First Amendment.
What, what-
Freedom of press.
Yeah, that's fine, you do have pretty, freedom of the press.
This is a government, public building, right?
But are you a member of the press? We also have guidelines around what members of the press are. So you haven't shared what your organization is?
Well, that's not a requirement.
It is a requirement for our, for, you're not just a member of the press.
For corporate, for corporate press, they, they, they sometimes will have an agreement-
Listen, I'm not gonna argue with you.
But it's not required by law.
Is, is this private property? I mean, it's, it's public property, but it's, but it's-
This is quite, this is quasi-private property.
Can you explain what that means?
At this point in time, if you don't have any business here, sir, you are gonna be asked to leave.
I, I do have business here.
So if you would please-
I have constitutionally protected business here, sir.
Would you please, would you please, guys, just step out, okay? Thank you, guys, I appreciate you.
Thanks, guys.
Alright.
Here, I'll give you my card, you can email me, um-
Do you have a business card? Uh, is it Commander Gonzalez?
It is Commander Gonzalez.
Did I get your identifier? Do you have a?
And like I was, like I was saying to Sergeant Crowe, uh, I need to make a public records request, so- So we have a process for that, too, it's on the website, you can email records@OCPS.net. The state of Florida has a process, too, it's the law, actually. So, you guys can comply with the law, or you can tell me that I'm, I'm obligated to follow your process. But the law is what we should all follow inside this public building.
And can you explain what you meant by quasi-private, quasi-public, whatever you said?
I'm not getting into it with either one of you gentlemen, it's not happening.
Why not? We have a right to know, I mean-
You might be courteous with the public?
I am being very courteous with the public.
Well, my understanding is it is a public building, you're saying it's quasi-public, so what's the difference between quasi-public and public? Cause if it's a public building, or it's occupied by a government entity, we have a right to be here, cause we're taxpayers.
Do you know how I can make my public records request? So you guys don't follow chapter 119 of the Florida statutes, the law?
I'm not getting into it with either one of you guys, it's just not gonna-
Well, it's the law, so I, I just wanna comply with the law. You wanna throw us out of the building, but I just wanna comply with the law.
We're not breaking the law, we're not here for anything nefarious.
What do you want, request records, I'm just gonna write it down, so that we can take your request, and we can forward it.
Appreciate that, Sergeant Crowe, what are you doing?
Just so we can, we can get this taken care of.
So I'll make it with him, then?
Yep, he's gonna write it down, so you can stay right there and come to you.
Oh, am I being paid? Process for that. So we do comply with the law and have to-
You're not being detained.
I'm not being detained, your department will reach out to you, there's our rec, it's records@OCPS.net. Feel free to submit any, yeah, we'll, we'll, we will follow the law, you submit your records request to that.
Not everyone has a computer.
I, 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 I'm not in charge of records, we have somebody that is in charge of records. Your custodial responsibility to take down my record request.
It's, it's part of being a public employee, it's just one of those things you expose yourself to.
There's a process, I'm not, I'm not in charge of that. There's also the law. I understand. You don't understand.
Law, law trumps policy.
Are you an attorney? I am not an attorney. Have you read the law? I have read the law. Then why are you telling me something that isn't in the law? Cause that's our compliance process, you go to records@OCPS.net. You said you read it, so. Am I not allowed to submit a verbal interview? This conversation is over, we have a process, our website has all of that.
Does not supersede the Constitution, does not supersede the Constitution.
So am I being trespassing in the building? I didn't get your card, sir. Gonzalez, did you get his card for me?
I, I have his card, I think.
I think he took it.
I thought he gave you a card, didn't he?
Is this it?
Yeah, that's Scott Howard.
Scott Howlett?
Yeah. Yeah, he gave you a card.
I got, I got one right here.
We're not used to this kinda stuff here, so it's, our, our, our policy is, you know, we don't deal with this, we don't deal with records, our policy says that we go through the records that I'm at.
Why do you think the legislators wrote the law?
I know, I know.
It's pretty clear cut, it's not a gray area that we're trying to discuss here.
What is Gonzalez's problem?
I can't speak for Gonzalez.
Well, I wish you had his job and-
You shut those off, I'll talk to you all day long, but, I know-
We can talk, afterwards, we'll shut our cameras off and talk to you.
I know I'm gonna be on YouTube already, so-
Well, you're, you're putting a pretty good face on Orange County Public Schools, all the other gentlemen are not.
I've dealt with this, I've dealt with this at the Kissimmee Police Department, and-
So you realize that we have a constitutional right?
Yeah, and I, I'm fairly new here, so I don't know what the right, I mean-
I would advise Gonzalez, uh, Commander Gonzalez to, you know, maybe change his tone, because he's, he's gonna be, you know, he's gonna regret it, um, you know, being a tyrant, so. So he's coming across-
Well, he's just trying to do his job.
Well, his job is, upholds of, to our constitutional rights.
You would think in a house of education, that we'd have more informed people working here, I mean, these people are in charge of educating our children?
Well, there's, you, you understand that Orange County Public School Board, or Orange County Public Schools has multiple buildings of-
Sure, but you understand what I'm saying, right?
But, so like this building here is-
This is like the head of the snake, you know what I mean?
This is like the office buildings for everybody, and we do the board meetings, it all used to come through here, but we had, you know, we can't take crowds here, you see, a lot of them are small, so they've moved, they've moved records, they've moved all these different things to other sites.
Yeah, so look over here, you got a waiting area. So obviously-
Basically for hiring, we hire people, they come in here and sit, and every day, we got ten, ten, twenty.
So basically, at the end of the day, man, if, if there's services for the public that we pay for, we can come and take pictures and video of those areas that, that are accessible to the public.
This is kind of a closed situation.
It's not kind of, there's no, there's no gray area, though.
Stand up, stand up. Yeah, okay.
No, I'm good. Sergeant Crowe, you did great, man.
It was nice talking to you, though, yeah.
Appreciate your respect and courtesy.
Alright, well, have a good day.
You too.
Gonzalez, do you have a card?
Be safe out there, man.
Do you have your identification number? You don't want a problem with that?
Not trying to give you a hard time, man, uh, Mr. Brown, but, um, after today, I think you guys will have a better, kind of a better idea of how to handle a situation like this, I mean, at the end of the day, this is a, this is a government building, or public building. So I mean, we have a right to do what we're doing, taking pictures and video, that's all. It's not a big deal.
Maybe you could be the voice of reason here, Sergeant Crowe. I'm happy that Sergeant Crowe's here, he seems to be a reasonable person, Gonzalez is a hothead.
Yeah. I didn't like, though, at first Sergeant Crowe said, oh, they're just here to make a YouTube video or whatever, so he's being a little presumptive in that, yeah, you were over there, but, but since then, like you said, he's been reasonable. I'm not gonna hold it too hard against him.
But they're, I mean, in addition to that, they're trying to say, my official business isn't official business.
Well, right under the Supreme, Supreme Court has ruled that taking pictures and video, um, in our building is legitimate business, not just protected activity, but it's legitimate business as well.
Hey there.
Hey.
My name is Vivian Kokotis, I'm with the Legal Services Department, how can we help you?
Uh, I would just like to make a public records request.
Okay.
Did you wanna take it down?
What is it?
Are you recording?
Are you recording?
It's obvious that I'm recording.
Okay.
Are you recording?
No, I don't have a need to record.
Okay.
Do you have something to write on? Cause we're gonna give it verbally.
Oh, okay.
You're recording?
What's your public records request?
Uh, is it Scott Hall?
Yeah, that's Scott Howlett.
Uh, we're gonna start there, Scott's creating a public record right now, and I would like a copy, a digital copy of that public record, but he's creating it on his phone.
Okay.
And I would like-
That's public record now, just so you know.
His application.
His application?
His employment application.
Okay.
Was he elected, or is he, uh-
He's an employee, he's not an elected individual.
So I'd like, uh, all of his salary information, and his disclaimer, history, like, the involvement.
Alright.
Can I interject just for a minute? Unless you have a memory like Rain Man, I'd suggest writing it down, cause he's got quite a few items he's gonna-
Well, he's recording it.
Oh, yeah, true point.
Sure, what's your name and I'm sorry?
My name is Vivian Kokotis.
Thank you, Vivian. Uh, the officers, uh, back there, Gonzalez and Crowe, I would like the same things for them.
Okay.
Like a roster of all the officers.
Okay.
Uh, and correspond and identification members.
Okay, and is there contact information where we could provide that to you?
There is. I, if I could also have the policy that, uh, that closes this building to the public. The policy that says that you guys don't have to follow chapter 119 of the Florida statutes.
Okay.
Scott has mentioned that there's a policy in place that says that you guys don't have to follow the law, so I'm just, I'd like a copy of that policy.
Well, we, we do abide by chapter 119, it is the public records statute.
Yes.
I think the, perhaps if there was a misunderstanding, we have a reasonable amount of time to get you-
Oh, of course, I'm not asking for the records right now, I'm just, I just wanted to submit the request, which is what I said to Scott, maybe, maybe there was just some miscommunication within delivering that information, you're on our, I'm not sure.
Alright.
Uh, I've got an email address.
Okay.
It's letters, L-E-T-T-E-R-S.
Okay.
Of O-F, Phocion, P-H-O-C-I-O-N, lettersofphocion@gmail.com. Um, and if I could have your, uh, your business card?
I didn't bring it down with me, but I will go upstairs and, and get you one of them. I have the offright down on me.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Scott, why is it that you're doing that? Why are you filming?
Well, he's filming the public records request.
He was filming before that, though. Why are you filming, Scott?
I thought we weren't allowed to record.
Are we not allowed to record, or?
I'm getting a record of what you asked.
I'm just-
So is this how you typically do things like that?
So I'm confused, I thought you, so you said we're not allowed to record, but yet you're recording?
You're still recording.
I'm not a public servant, sir, I don't, I'm not a, I'm not part of your policy that doesn't allow you to make a public record.
That's recording you, too. All those, all those-
Correct, so what's the difference with one more camera, right?
Well, making sure I'm recording this, uh, this-
I mean, that's why, I don't have a problem with you recording, it's just, it seems a little bit hypocritical to me. And we can fully request that as well, so do not delete that, you're put on notice, cause if you delete that, it's a crime, when we try to fully request that and it's gone. So, just keep it on your phone.
Here's my name, and my direct line telephone number, as well as my, um, email, I will work with the records custodian to make sure we get you, um, the information that you've requested, that he's taken down.
Appreciate that, could you just pronounce your last name, Brian?
Kokotis.
Thank you, Mr. Kokotis. Um, you're, you're the, the general counsel here, so is there an issue with us being in this building and recording?
There is, we do not have a public meeting, there is a security concern, we don't know what you're recording, and, um, it does not appear that there's a legitimate business purpose for you to be here. And it's, I mean, if you were here for a public meeting, then certainly, as a citizen, you could attend the public meeting. So the concern is, is that I don't have any information from you, I have no ID, I don't know what you're here for, you could be here for a nefarious purpose.
Well, I'm videotaping, so I mean, it seems kind of silly that I would videotape something that I was doing nefariously, correct?
But you could videotape something and come back and blow up the building, if you're, if you're casing the place, to try and determine-
That's not the hyperbolic and silly.
No, it isn't, I mean, we have a number of, it hasn't, but who knows what can happen? Normally, when we have public meetings, we do have screeners up, to make sure-
So do you ID every single person that comes into this building?
Yes, they come in-
Let me just be clear, you violate every single citizen's Fourth Amendment rights, when they come into this public building?
When they come into the building, they come in either that way, that way, they check in here, they state the purpose for their business, and we facilitate- And we facilitate what their business is.
That's a relinquishment of our Fourth Amendment right, a violation of it.
Well, we can disagree on the law, but at this point-
You have to follow the law.
If there is no purpose, then I would kindly ask you to leave.
So would you disagree that what I just, the whole conversation that we had about the public records, that is not official business? That wasn't official?
It is. You came in, you, you gave your records request. We've taken that down.
We're still speaking. I mean-
Okay, so are we, is there, is this-
Well, yeah, I'm trying to understand. I was, Scott told us that we couldn't be here. He told us that we couldn't videotape. He told us all these things that weren't true. Right?
Look, I wasn't here. I don't know what the conversation occurred.
Unfortunately, it's videotaped for Scott.
Okay, that's great.
And Scott's gonna have to deal with the repercussions of that coming out publicly because it's not a very good look for the school district.
Okay, I understand that. But I, but at this point, you've, you've given your public records request. We are going to process the requests. And so, so how else can we help you?
Well, that, that was said. We were having a conversation about what just occurred, right? So that, I mean, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
I don't think that, that there's some law that prohibits us from being in this building.
Well, there isn't.
Is there a law that prohibits us from being in this building, in this public building?
I, you're lingering at this point.
That's an assertion based on prejudice.
We're literally having a conversation about, about it.
Okay, but I'm not here to have a conversation with you about it.
Well, you're telling me that I can't be somewhere that I can be, and I'm asking you what law tells me that I can't be here? And you're telling me that I'm lingering, that I'm only lingering because we're-
You came to give a public records request. You've given that public records request.
We're also here to gather content, so we're not finished even after this request.
To get the content?
We're here to gather content for a story, so we're not done after this FOIA request.
Well, we will be trespassing you if you don't leave and have a legitimate purpose.
Then I'm gonna put you on notice that you will be opening yourself up. Your name will be on a civil lawsuit.
Okay.
Okay?
Could I have to have trespassing written, please? I'm not sure.
We're gonna call Orange, uh, Orlando PD and have you trespassed.
Okay.
So, um, if that's where we are-
So you're trespassing me from the building because, for what reason?
You do not have a legitimate purpose to be here at this point.
You sure you wanna-
I don't know who you are. I don't know what your purpose is to be here. And I think that you, if you came in to do, give a public records request, we have taken down that public records request. We will respond accordingly. But for you to just stand here and record without a purpose and an understanding-
Oh, there's a purpose.
For us to gather, it's a security concern at this point, so we'd rather-
And in fairness, I'm standing here because you and I are speaking.
Okay, and while I'm done speaking now, so when I leave, will you be staying?
I probably won't be, no. I'm conducting my business.
Alright.
Yeah. But I mean, if Orlando PD is coming, I'll gladly wait for-
Well, no, I mean, you know, we're trying to work through this in a civilized manner to hear, to see if you have a business purpose. And if there is a business purpose, we're happy to accommodate you, just the way we accommodate any other member of the public.
I appreciate the accommodation. I truly do. My public records request ended some time ago, yet Scott's still filming. It seems like Scott's doing that in an, in an effort to intimidate. What is the purpose of the, the videotaping, Scott?
I, he's documenting what's transpiring here because-
He's documenting?
We're documenting what, what we're doing here. What's the, what's the difference?
The difference is that-
Because we're peasants?
No, the difference is that we are public employees and we have a duty to safeguard the location.
I agree with you, but do you think that the public has a duty to safeguard what goes on in public buildings? Do you think that the public employees need to be under any scrutiny for behavior like Scott is exhibiting? That you should just be able to treat people any way that you want because you're in this lockdown public building?
Gentlemen, I, I don't know what occurred before I got here, and I don't want to debate that. I came down because I assist the department that does public records requests. So I thought I could facilitate your public records request.
And I appreciate you coming down more than you know because Scott told me that it couldn't happen.
And so, that's what I came to do. If there's anything else I can help you with, I will gladly do so. But if not, then I would just kindly ask you, if you do not have any other business, to go ahead and, and, and leave.
Well, we do have other business. I already answered that question for you.
If your business is just to stand here and record the building, then that raises a level of security concern that-
Let me, let me educate you for just a second. So, under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, there's freedom of press, right?
Sure. Are you a member of the press?
Yes, so that's constitutionally-
You have ID?
Ma'am, I'm not done talking. That's constitutionally protected activity. Supreme Court has ruled that taking pictures and video is legitimate business.
Okay.
A lot of people don't know that. That's, that's one of the reasons why we're explaining this to you. So, if you decide to trespass us, just be forewarned that you will be sued and you'll lose.
Okay.
So, um, this is legitimate business. We're not done yet. We'll let you know when we're done, or we don't have to let you know, but we'll be gone before operating hours.
Ms. Kokotis, could I ask a question? You, you, you mentioned where, I, maybe I didn't catch it exactly. Where is our press what? You said we're members of the press?
Yes, I, you said you're members of the press.
Okay, so if, if somebody's speaking, do they have free speech?
Okay, look, I'm not gonna get into this debate with you if you have a legitimate-
Do they have credentials for your speech?
Yes, they do.
They have credentials for their religion?
If they're here for a public meeting and they're a member of the public, they can stand up and speak, but they're not representing that they're in the press.
Let's be reasonable. We're granted these rights. The people are granted these rights, Vivian.
You don't need permission for rights. This is America.
Don't destroy that record, Scott.
Hey, Scott. Are you-
You guys take care.
Are you proud about violating a citizen's rights? No comments?
So what's going on today?
He's talking to a lady right here, and then his one of his partners, they came in here. And, you know, we asked them what they wanted, and they were like, um, something about, first of all, I think they're YouTubers, basically, and they just started recording. You know, stuff like that, you know. First of all, they didn't have an appointment. They had, really had no business being here.
Okay.
So, and then when we asked them to leave, they're giving us a bunch of runaround about their, first thing they did was say that and the other, so.
Alright, well.
He's one of his partners on the outside, so.
Let me, uh, make a phone call to our legal department real quick.
Okay, alright, no problem.
So that's not a restricted area of the building, right?
As far as-
That they're in?
It's, it's not, no.
Alright. Let me call our legal department.
Officer was asking if, uh, I was in any restricted area, in any of the areas that I was in. And I just spoke up and said, no, none of the areas that we were in are restricted.
It's a security concern. Someone asked me to leave. Um, this, this is one of the gentlemen, and the other gentleman is inside. And, um, we just indicated to them that we would trespass them if they were not willing to leave. They indicated that one gentleman would stay out. This gentleman has stayed here in order for them to receive the trespass citation.
Alright, well, let me call our legal department and see what we can do.
How you doing, sir?
How's it going?
What's your name and badge number?
Officer Horn, three five three five.
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
So let me call our legal and see what they say.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Zach.
How you doing, sir?
Hey, what's your name and badge number, sir? You're really tall. You should be a basketball player. What's your name and badge number?
Three one nine eight five.
Thank you. And it's Officer McPhee? Got it, thank you. Appreciate your professionalism. How you doing, ma'am?
Good, how are you?
Hey, good.
Voita.
Hi, what are you?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. What's your, uh, badge number?
One nine nine three five.
One nine nine, how you say your last name?
Rennish.
Rennish, oh, okay, cool. Nice to meet you.
What's your name?
I'm Zach.
Zach, nice to meet you.
Yes, ma'am, nice to meet you.
I know you wanna do certain things, so we're just trying to make sure that everything's done according to what your rights are and what their rights are.
Amen, yeah. Uh, hey, I'm not gonna ask you for special treatment. I just want you guys to uphold your oath, that's all.
Yeah, no, no. I'm just, this is a new area, so I've never actually been inside here.
It's my first time too, yeah.
So this is actually pretty neat. I'll check in with them and I'll come back and talk to them with you.
Okay, I'll, I'll hang around.
Did you have questions for me or anything?
No, I'll just kinda wait to see, you know, how this plays out, and I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards. It's fine. I'll be around. Yeah, I'm not gonna leave. Alright, thank you.
Hey, how's it going?
Hey, man, good. I can send something to, uh-
Question.
Kim, okay.
So this building is like, people can come in and out as they need to, or?
So this is what we consider a quasi-public or private building, which means that if you have business here, okay, you're welcome to come in, okay? You have to have meetings, you have to have scheduled meetings, okay, and so forth.
Is it like posted anywhere? Because our, because our legal department's gonna ask.
Okay.
Is when, when we call them back.
It may not be posted. I gotta be honest with you. Do you think it's posted, something like that? I don't think it is. I'll be frank with you. That's how we do it with Thursday.
Because like, that area is all, you had to have badges come back there, right?
Yeah, you have to get a badge.
And they're just right in here.
They're right in here.
There's nothing here for the public to come to do. It's all human resources, hiring, and then board meetings on Tuesdays on when they're, when they're out there, that's a public event.
Guys, how are you? Voita.
Hey, how are you? Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So, uh, this is a nice building. Very nice building. So is this by appointment only?
So it's by appointment only?
By appointment only, okay.
So if you have, it's, it's not visibly posted right now, but yeah, it's, it's-
Okay.
So typically what happens is you have to get buzzed in to come into the building. When you come to the building, you're coming to the information desk. Whatever your business happens to be, whatever your business happens to be, we direct you, okay?
Okay.
Even, even employees, okay, that don't work out of this building specifically, they need to come in here, kinda check in. Where, where you guys heading? Okay, and then they'll let you go.
And everybody gets run through Raptor. So anybody that comes in this building, we need their ID so that they can run them through Raptor and get a badge.
Okay, so it's sort of lingering, hanging, avoiding around here.
They won't even produce ID. They said they didn't have to.
Okay, okay. Has he informed you what his business is?
He's a First Amendment, First Amendment.
Got it.
That's all. That's, that's basically, I'm here to make a record request.
Oh, oh, a record request?
And he did so with, um-
He did so with, uh, Vivian?
Vivian.
He already did it?
He already did it.
And he wants you guys to-
He, he wants to be, he wants you to see, right?
I have not had the opportunity to see him.
We've had him in, uh, Kissimmee several times. They're here in courthouses. They want, they wanna make sure that we harass them or what. We're not, because we think we're doing our job, but that's what they do, and then they'll put you all over YouTube and call the police and sue everybody.
Okay. Well, let me make a quick phone call, and then I'll just go back to him and see if he has any questions.
And he'll tell you he's a First Amendment.
Okay, alright, I'll be right back.
Okay.
All these doors had to be buzzed in?
They're all locked. Everything's locked. The only access is here, and you gotta do it through a, uh, he, they followed somebody in, but you gotta hit the button, and they, they get it on the screen to ask you what your business is here.
But is that like, like posted anywhere that it says something like that, or?
I mean, you can't just walk in. You have to-
Yeah, I got you.
You gotta come in to provide your ID right here to him, so he can get you a printed badge. We check you through to make sure you're not a pedophile or any of, you know, certain things, so that for the school, we got certain people labeled.
Right.
And then they get a, a badge saying why they're here, you know, it's a paper badge, stick them.
I got you.
So you just can't just walk in and say, hey, I'm gonna go to the lunchroom or whatever. It's not how the building works. You have to be buzzed in. Or follow somebody in.
Okay.
Without, you know.
In other words, we didn't break in with the program.
Didn't break in, but you didn't follow procedure.
And the procedure is to be, to show ID when you come in, right?
The procedure is to push the button to be buzzed in and come straight to the desk, show ID, get run through Raptor.
Yeah, we did that part. We just said it's show ID because it's a relinquishment of our Fourth Amendment right.
It's policy for the building.
Policy doesn't trump the Constitution. Now, the Fourth Amendment right, I did a lot of, you do too, when you're not-
I know, I got it, sure, alright. I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate the Fourth Amendment. I don't appreciate how it goes here. Just like, it's not cool, but.
It's just, it's just another government public building that we face. You guys, this isn't like the Pentagon or White House.
I don't get like why some people get all like uptight over a camera. The camera's like all over this. I counted like ten or whatever, just in this open area. Oh, excuse me. We've only been in, we've only been like in this open area.
Right.
That's it. We didn't go like back there or anywhere, anywhere that's restricted or secured, so. I don't know, yeah. I never know until it's done. Um, sometimes it goes right to the trash, other times it's, you know, it's disseminated to the public in different ways, but I can't like divulge all the details until it's published, you know. Amy, you guys have been cordial professionals so far, so I appreciate that.
We're just waiting on the phone call.
So when, when at four o'clock when we close, you guys leaving?
Absolutely, yeah. We're not gonna break the law.
And you're not gonna go anywhere where you're not supposed to be?
Absolutely not gonna, no.
If that wasn't a current form of conversation.
I understand that, but, uh-
And we wouldn't record ourselves breaking the law either. That'd be stupid.
You realize we didn't waste those resources, right? That the school, the school wasted those resources.
A minute ago, didn't you guys put in your requests for all our information?
That was part of the reason why we were here. That wasn't the full reason. The other reason, like I said, is we were gathering content for a story.
The what?
Gathering content for a story. That's the, the, the primary business. Part of the business was to get our-
Content, yeah?
Not yet.
What do you, we're not gonna arrest you. They're not gonna do anything. Everybody knows not to do that.
Yeah, I mean-
So, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, is what else do you need?
I don't know yet.
You're roaming around.
I'm waiting for the, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for the, um, end result here. And then I'll thank everybody for their service and probably hang around for a few minutes after that, after you guys leave, and then I'll head out.
Did you end up adding that to?
I did. I got with Vivian, and she wrote it down.
Which channel am I gonna be on? Nine?
You got, do you have a, do you have an email you can give me on the business card?
I don't wanna see it.
Crowe, you're gonna look great.
Okay.
I'll, I'll email it to you.
Be real, like, you're gonna look great. It's, it's your colleagues, especially, is it Gonzalez?
Some people haven't dealt with this, and, you know, they're just trying to do the best that we can do.
Well, the best if I put your best foot forward.
Not everybody knows the law, like, for that doubts. Doesn't mean they're bad people.
I'm not accusing anybody of being a bad person, but, you know, every single one of these people in this building, they swore an oath also. Every single one of these public employees signed an oath to support the, the Constitution, so, you know, it behooves them to educate themselves on what that oath, you know, what's, what's involved.
Have a good night.
You too, YouTube.
Yeah, I've been arrested in a situation like this.
I bet you have. I've seen it on YouTube.
Yeah, and I was doing-
Not you personally, but others.
Yeah, and I was doing the same thing I was doing here, so, you know, and somebody tells me-
But you go out expecting something like that to happen?
Well, no, I expect my rights to be upheld. You know, that's not-
But you gotta know that you're doing this and that some people would act irrationally.
And that's why I left.
Considering all things, yeah. Yeah. But hey, regardless of what we're doing, at the end of all this, everyone in this building is gonna be educated. On the, on the, on the-
There's gonna be training, I'm sure.
Supreme, on the supreme law of the land. Nothing trumps that. And it's important that, you know, our government officials, police officers, understand what the Constitution is, because that is the utmost thing that they're, they have sworn to protect and uphold our rights.
Why aren't you guys in more spots like where they need it, like maybe in Washington DC where they're destroying our Constitution?
Hey, if I can have opportunity to travel up there, I would love to.
Those people are the ones that need this training.
Well, you're not wrong.
Hundred percent right on that.
Um, but it looks like they need a little bit of warning too.
This doesn't affect everybody as much as they do.
Well, this affects the future generations.
A lot of shit affected them.
Yeah, me, I could open up a can of worms on that.
Have a good night.
Ladies.
Oh, and welcome back. Alright, let's see what the answer is.
Alright.
Alright, sir. Well, it was nice meeting you, okay?
Nice to meet you, YouTube.
Me too, we here for them.
Officer Crowe's been great, by the way.
He's great?
Yeah, he's a good-
I've never met him before.
Oh, really?
So, um, we're done here. Do you have any questions for me?
Um, so we're good. We're, I mean, it was established that we're not breaking any laws or, you know, we, we have a right to be here. We're not gonna be kicked down on a trespass or anything like that.
Well, this building is an appointment-only building, and people come here when they have business to do, right?
Yeah.
And you had a, you had something to do. I think you came for-
Yeah, for requests and to gather content for a story. We're almost, we're not done quite on the gathering content part, but we did accomplish the FOIA request successfully. We had to kinda pull teeth at first a little bit to get that done, but we get, we did get it done, so we're just gonna wait for the items to, uh, be accomplished and fulfilled, so, um, so yeah, um, we're not gonna be here, we're not gonna be here all day. We're not gonna be here beyond operation hours. We're not gonna go into restricted areas. Um, after you guys leave, we'll probably leave shortly after that, so we're not gonna hang around too long.
We appreciate your help.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, you guys be safe.
Hey, thank you guys for upholding your oath. Appreciate you. You too. Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll have to wait and watch to see what that conversation looked like, but hopefully, we'll see what, we borrow these fruits, so.
Yeah.
Nice they done.
So when you get, if you get the footage before I do, you can send it to me. I appreciate it, or vice versa.
Guys, good now?
Yeah.
Almost, yeah, we're just waiting for them to leave and-
You gotta keep that in the rest of the time, or are we gonna get to talk?
Um, yeah, we'll get to talk outside. Soon as we're, we'll let you know when we're heading out, we'll talk. That's fine.
Can, can you walk outside a little?
Maybe like-
If you shut them, I'm not gonna go out.
Maybe like five minutes. Maybe it's like, maybe five minutes, yeah.
I just wanna get, you know, get an idea of-
Yeah, be happy to-
But not on camera anymore.
Yeah, I can respect that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just give me a wave and I can-
Okay. Yeah, so just for future reference, if you ever get somebody coming in here recording, best thing to do is just let them do it, because if, if no one bothers them, they usually just get their content, and then they leave a lot quicker. Like, we would've been gone within five, 10 minutes if nobody's-
But you do understand our, our position.
This is a school.
I get it, yeah.
And we have a lot of-
That's part of the reason why we're here, though, brother, is that we're just, we're just here to make- Yeah, we're just here to, we want people to be aware of our civil rights in this country. That's something that we take very seriously.
Okay, I understand that.
And I understand you're just doing your job. I'm not gonna hold it too harshly against you, but I just want you to understand that, you know, future reference, if it happens again, the best thing to do is ignore them. If they ask you a question, just be polite, professional, let them do their thing. They'll be out within 10 minutes usually. That's it. But, uh, we're gonna head out. You wanna ready to head out?
Alright, no problem.
Alright, have a good one, man.
You too.